Recording in progress. It is 9:00 AM and I will call if you need to order. First up, we will do a round of introductions. I'm Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Zan Ojero, Commissioner.
Tammy Tracy, Benton County Administrator.
It's Burning County Council.
And we will go to the boardroom and then check in with anyone online.
I mean, Nikki, some interesting specials.
Corey Brown, Public Information.
Erica Milo, Board Reporter.
And is there anyone online that would like to introduce themselves?
Private citizen Benton County.
Lynn McKee, Director of Benton County Natural Resources Parks and Events.
Hi, April Holland, Public Health Administrator.
All right, anyone else online that would like to introduce themselves? All right, moving on to announcements, are there any announcements? No announcements? That will take us to comments from the public. If you would like to make a public comment, you will have up to three minutes. I will check with the boardroom first and then move to online. Is there anyone in the boardroom who would like to make public comments? Being and hearing none, is there anyone online with us that would like to make a public comment? Being and hearing none, we will move on to our work session. First up is our COVID update from Department Operations Center. And I believe we have with us April Holland, welcome.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Wise. Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Tammy and everyone here today. I have your every other week COVID update today. Want to first let you know that the cadence of data publication is changing at the state level and elsewhere. So just want to let you know that OHA has stopped publishing certain dashboards and has moved others to different publication schedules. But I want you to know that we'll continue to bring you the most current data that we have. Overall, we remain in a much better place with COVID-19 than truly than we ever have been. The pandemic is in a different stage, to be sure, but it is still with us and continues to disrupt lives as well as our patterns of daily life. And I can't resist to say that that comments that the pandemic is over really run at cross purposes with public health efforts, including our efforts to reduce transmission with the availability of the new bivalent booster. So please, we encourage everyone to go out and get the booster when they're eligible to help reduce the impact of surges that are likely to be in our future. In terms of COVID reported cases, CDC reported our case rate as 77 per 100,000 residents, which is down from 95 when I last provided an update two weeks ago. And hospitalizations have continued on a downward trajectory as well. The total hospitalized patients in Oregon as of a week ago on 9/13 was 254, and that's down from 464 in mid-July. Here in Region 2, 26 people were hospitalized as of September 14th. And regional hospitalizations saw a sharp drop. And then in the last few weeks, they've been somewhat steady in the range of about 25 to 35 daily. And the last time we've seen hospitalizations around this level was mid-May of this year. Latest CDC data reflect 3.1 COVID admissions per 100,000 in our area. And CDC combines Benton and Lynn County in their hospitalization data. And this is down from 4.5 per 100,000 two weeks ago. Moving back to the vaccination and the boosters, efforts to get the bivalent booster to our eager community members has gone well for the most part. Anytime we have high demand and low supply, we'll have some challenges. In addition to the 2,117 vaccines administered at the fairgrounds and at OSU by our local OHA partner, I also want to give a shout out to all of our partners who administered vaccines at local pharmacies and providers' offices. In just the last week or so, Rice's Pharmacy, Rite Aid, Safeway, Costco, and many other pharmacies administered hundreds of doses. And Samaritan Health Services, Corvallis Clinics, our community health centers, and many other medical providers likewise served up strength and immunity to hundreds of county residents. We're so grateful for the vaccine infrastructure that we have in place. We do hope to see bivalent vaccines expanded to younger age groups sometime soon. No info just yet on that, but we'll keep you updated. And in some, you know, the more uptake we have in our community, the better prepared we will be for the upcoming winter season. And speaking of winter, sometime between now and Halloween, it's also time to get your annual flu shot scheduled. That's really all I have for you today, and I'm happy to answer any that you might have. Thanks.
All right, any questions or comments? Thank you. Yes, thank you very much, April. We appreciate you coming here today and giving us all your good information. Have a good day. All right, with that, we will move on to 4.2 update from Benton County Tox Trash Solid Waste Process Group. And we have with us Darren Nichols, our Community Development Director. And then I noticed that we have Sam Imbarati joining us on line. Welcome.
Thank you. Giving a strange echo here.
Got better?
Okay, thanks. Okay. Good morning, Commissioner Wise and Commissioners. Thank you, this is our twice monthly update with you all. I want to keep you apprised of the work of the Benton County Tox Trash Work Group and also invite your advice, guidance, direction as we move forward. So that's why we're here before this morning. The work group is off to a good start. And I want to start by thanking the work group members and you all for working together. The members have attended the first two meetings really well and have been attentive and engaged. And I think that bodes very well for us going forward on this important topic. This morning, I'm going to provide a quick recap of the first two meetings, and then Sam will discuss some of the kind of issues and some more nuanced reflections on the balance of the work group's membership. Erica, you have in your email inbox an email from you that has a kind of a pullout chart. In a couple of minutes or a few minutes, we can be prepared to post that or share that part of the screen. No, in a few minutes, yeah, when Sam starts, thank you. Oh, maybe I can do it here. Never mind. All right, thanks. All right, very good. So the work group met, meeting number one was September 8th, and you all were there. Thank you for being there. We had a slow start to that meeting, as you recall, but we made it for last time thanks to Sam's skill and the work group's readiness. So we met at the fairgrounds, had a good first start at that meeting. We welcomed the work group members. We discussed the five charges that are outlined in the charter. We also talked about the format.
I heard it again, yeah.
For the final report.
Sorry, please continue.
Thanks. Apologies for those listening in, we're getting a strange echo here in the room, comes and goes. So we talked about the format for the final report that will eventually come to you. And we're using that as kind of the skeleton, if you will, for the work, a place to organize the work group's thoughts and then kind of get us on track from the start so that we're ready to present something to you in mid-December that is coherent and organized. The work group also was assigned some homework coming out of that first meeting, and that included reviewing a preliminary draft of the Common Understandings compilation. We conducted a survey to gauge work group members about their relative interests across the five charge areas. And we've fleshed out a table of contents for an eventual solid waste management plan. So a roadmap, if you will, which is the work group's charge is to come back to you with a scope of work, a recommended scope of work. And as far as Sam can tell you more, but I think the work group members participated very robustly and timely in their homework in between the meetings. We only had a one-week turnaround. So then on September 15th, at meeting number two, the work group discussed three primary areas, including triaging the section of the Common Understandings document related to prior land use. There was some robust discussion around that topic. So that was one of the areas that we spent time on. We also worked on a track changes review of the Common Understandings document and a track changes review of the table of contents for the solid waste management plan. So using that kind of group editing process to help get to some consensus. That last task is really a preliminary step for scoping the Sustainable Materials Management Plan. So outlining a table of contents, getting agreement about what all should be included and what that should look like. That will then enable the work group to begin scoping or developing a recommended scope for the Sustainable Materials Management Plan. Couple of other things, on this Saturday, the work group was invited to tour Coffin View landfill. That's also open to the public. So at 10:00 AM, Republic Services will host a landfill tour. The members of the public are welcome to attend and join. We're going to have an RSVP that will go out later today. So we ask that people indicate their interest to us in advance so we can make sure we have enough seats on the bus or buses. And then last but not least, we've been asked to encourage people to wear closed-toed shoes just for safety. So appreciate the landfill operators agreeing to take us on a tour. The following week, October 1st, the work group is also invited to attend a tour of the neighborhoods surrounding Coffin View. So that's being jointly hosted by Benton County and a couple of interested neighbors who are also work group members who are organizing kind of a contextual tour of the surrounding properties. So again, that will start, I believe, at 10:00 AM. Some of those details are kind of falling into place, depending on when we can get a driver for the bus. But we look forward to both of those tours, this Saturday, September 24th, at the landfill, and the next Saturday, October 1st, on the neighborhoods surrounding. So looking ahead to meeting number three, just a quick preview. The work group will hear a couple of presentations, a Public Officials 101 presentation, really focused on their role and roles as public officials. Then also a land use 101 presentation. There's been some questions raised that we feel like it would be best to address in kind of an overview of Oregon land use and what that means for Benton County. And then we'll continue to discuss the Sustainable Materials Management Plan, that table of contents, continue to discuss the triaging of prior land use conditions of approval. And then working on the track changes version of the Common Understandings document. At that point, I believe that meeting, that's October 6th. So we've got a little while for that meeting. But at that point, we will also begin to discuss Charge B, the second charge, which is clarifying some Benton County's existing policies as it relates to the review of land use applications relating to the landfill. One other thing you should know is that there was some interest in developing subgroups or kind of advisory committees of the working group. And so I expect that as we go forward in between meeting times, there'll be small groups of individuals working on subtopics. Those groups may also include members of the public who have stepped forward and indicated some interest. I just want to let you know that may come back to you at some point and ask for your consent to those kind of subgroups, just so you know who's working on what, if you feel really good about the level of interest. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sam and ask Erica to pull up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. The good news is that we're having tours. The bad news is on the driver of the bus. And given my performance at our first meeting, I may or may not get there on time. That's why last me, I had my staff actually drive me. So we'll make sure that doesn't happen again. The second point is, we have a vacancy, as you know. Brandon Bates was unable to participate given his schedule. And so we asked a homework survey poll between meeting one and two. And the question was, all things considered, is the Benton County Tox Trash work group balanced fairly? So you would vote, it was a seven-point scale with zero being you strongly disagree and seven being you agree. The polling members voted a 3.3. The ex-official members voted a 4.0. Together, that was 3.5 on the seven-point scale. It was scattered, as you probably can see on your screen, although I can't see your screen. So I'm not sure if it's up or not. But the...
Sorry to interrupt. Nope, we haven't gotten that up yet, but just so you know.
I'll pause for a second.
Unfortunately, it's not compatible with this.
Sam, it looks like you may not be able to present that for visual.
Okay.
Unless you're a Word document version of it.
Okay.
Carry on, Sam.
Thank you. So seven-point scale, zero being you strongly disagree with the proposition that the work group is balanced fairly. Seven, if you strongly agree that it is. The polling member said 3.3 on that scale, which is to the left of neutral, meaning the negative end of neutral. The ex-official member said 4.0. And that is to the other side of neutral. And on total, if you consider all the participants that took the survey, it's 3.5, which is between the neutral and to the positive end slightly. Polling members, two voted that they strongly disagreed with the statement that it's balanced fairly. And two member, oh, well, mystically, there it is. So thank you. So that document speaks for itself. You can see the polling members, two voted to strongly disagree and two voted to. One was neutral. And then there were... Then there were the members that voted fours, fives, and ones. So that is a seven, believe it was on the agree end of the spectrum, and four said it wasn't. All the ex-official members put it on the agree, just one notch over to neutral. So the question becomes, A, what process would you like to engage in to fill the Brandon Bates' vacated slot? And as is always the case with processes like this, the timing is crucial. And you know, in a perfect world, we would have whoever your replacement is, he, she, or they, for our next meeting. So I'll stop there and allow questions, comments, suggestions, et cetera.
Comments, Commissioner Ojero.
I do know that there's been significant community interest, and there have been other community members that have attended both meetings to date. And as you mentioned, Darren, there are also these sub-work groups that have formed that include additional community members that are not polling members. I think that my first instinct would be to take a look at that group of people and select someone from that group because they are much more likely to be up to speed than someone that we might choose from the broader community's point.
Yeah, I had a similar comment. I'm not sure who's showing up, but any community members that have attended at least one of the first two meetings should be in line to be considered for replacing Brandon Bates.
I think, I mean, that could be ideal. We also recorded the meetings, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so even if a community member was not able to attend, they would be able to watch the video and get up to speed if they would like to.
And they wouldn't have to wait the first twenty minutes.
There you go. Is that good enough direction from us, or do we need to have more conversation?
Sam, I'm looking at you for a moment. What do you think? Is that enough direction?
Well, I guess we could, you know, send out a notice asking for volunteers like we did last time and put together a list. And then you can look at that list vis-à-vis your sense of the balance of the various interests currently at the table. It's just the timing, you know, is really difficult to accomplish in the next roughly 10 days to get that person at meeting three.
Sure, you know, we had a really good list of interested people the first time. I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if there's, I mean, how would you feel about picking somebody from that list?
I'd be more inclined to pick from community members that have actually attended a first meeting or two. At this point, this is a little bit of a cold list. And, you know, I don't know what kind of pool that would be of people that have already participated, but that's where I would look first.
I agree with that. And I think there may be some overlap between the books that apply and that have continued to sit in even though they weren't appointed.
Sure. So would it be, is it possible to get us a list of participants that have come to the meetings? And then we can give you feedback of what? I know we have a tight timeline here. We do have a meeting next week. I was going to say, should we target next week for making that decision? Does that work?
I think so, yes, that can work. There has been quite a bit of overlap between people who expressed initial interest and those who have attended. I think, I don't have the rosters in front of me, but I think we've had 20 to 30 members of the public in addition to the work group. So attendance has been pretty strong, and there's been some, you know, names you would recognize. So we'll send that around to you as soon as this meeting's over, give you a chance to look at that, put it on the agenda for next week to make a selection. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. The final topic is, Darren mentioned quickly, it is the need to form two working subcommittees. And they involve two issues. As a result of the assessment, there was several comments about whether Republic had been complying with the past conditions in the land use process. And staff put together a detailed document laying out all the applications and all the conditions associated with it. We are doing a triage exercise this week to get preliminary feedback from the work group members as to which of those staff conclusions about staff's workday, vote one, two, or three on, three being they oppose what staff has said, one being they fully support it, and two being they can live with it. That then will give us a list of the key conditions that folks have concerns about. And a work group will be put together. And I believe the volunteers for that were Joe Geyer and Natty Whitcomb, along with folks from Republic, and then of course, a staff member too. The other, Paul Neatfeld did a very informative presentation on what I'll call the numbers issue surrounding the landfill, its capacity, how much time before it's full, what, you know, the impact of the quarry and related issues. And that has been the second key issue in the assessment. And going forward is to get a handle on, you know, what are the best-known facts or the most reliable facts surrounding that? Because out there in Benton County, there are a variety of different views as to that. So I think the best course of action is to get Paul in a room with Republic and any other volunteers in a facilitated fashion and see if we can work that offline and then bring it to the work group for a final comment and polling. It is, you know, an exercise in Excel and exercise in assumptions and doing that in real time with 20 people is not a productive task. So we are actually asking today for your permission to form those committees and asking you secondarily, if you agree with that, is it okay to add select members of the public to participate in that process?
My answer is yes. Agreed.
I think that's a good idea.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioners. We'll implement. Thank you, commissioners. We'll we'll implement the subcommittees and invite members of the public. We'll be checking with Vance about to make sure we dot our open meeting I's and cross open meeting T's as far as notice of those subcommittee meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other comments or questions or?
That's it for this morning. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much, commissioners. Other follow up questions, anything else before we move on?
So you're gonna give us feedback every twice a month? Is that the plan?
Our goal currently is to meet with you formally in this hour at your first and third meetings of the month. If you feel like you need more or less, we will not be offended. We'll do our best to comply.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Darren, and thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item four point three, update from Justice System Improvement Program. We have Nick Kurt, our Justice System Improvement Program Manager. Welcome.
Chair Weiss, I have hard copies.
Thank you, sir. All right, there we go. And we're still one minute ahead of schedule, so. Working out perfectly.
You planned that perfectly. Thank you, Chair Weiss. Missioners, Acting County Administrator Tammy Tracy, and I would acknowledge Vance Cronin County Council as well. So objective here is to provide an update on the Justice System Improvement Program. I think I'm scheduled to to provide updates on first and third Tuesdays, not like Darren. And we'll offer the same if you need more actively to join. If you need less, just let me know. Before I dive into the the timeline that's in front of you and up on the screen, which I I kind of like to use as as a guide for today's discussion, I did want to provide a quick update on the mental health forum, which all of you attended on nine thirteen. And so that JACET Mental Health Forum objective, of course, was to discuss how our proposed facilities will improve outcomes in crisis response and the justice system. We had seventy two attendees between the auditorium, Zoom and Facebook. Brenda Downham and Tracy, Tracy. Tracy, I'm sorry, Almond. I was, I wanted to say almond and I knew that wasn't right. Almond, thank you. Are compiling the questions that we received. I know they've been digitized already. And so we did have some glitches on the the Zoom attendees. They are going to reach out directly to those participants and ask them if they didn't, weren't able to participate in the survey or weren't able to submit questions to please do so offline. And so then we will create a report of questions and responses to share with you probably in early October, potentially later this month, but I think early October is is reasonable. And then we also plan to categorize or put those questions into kind of common themes and post responses to the Q and A portion of our new website, which is what we've done with our past engagement events. So that's that's kind of next steps. And then, of course, now our attention turns to the Community Safety Forum, which is on October nineteenth. So that's that's our next scheduled forum. Let me just pause there and ask if there's any questions about the JACET Mental Health Forum.
Questions?
Okay. Well, then I'll move on. So what's in front of you?
Yes, one one comment, the approximately five minute jail, current jail video, I think, was well done and whatever we can do to get that out to the wider community, I think, would would be helpful. I mean, I've encouraged people to do a physical tour of jail whenever that's possible, but that's a pretty limited group that can would want to do that and could do that. And I think the the video is second best as far as, oh, that that looks really small or just get a better sense of what the current situation is.
Sure. And that that video is available on our new website. It's there now. And so that's really the easiest way to to share the video is to point point people to the the JACET website.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm not going to go through every line item here. This is essentially kind of a tasks milestone hitting major deliverables related to the Justice System Improvement Program. And we're checking things off nicely. You'll see in September, we did we did, in addition to our mental health forum, conduct another community survey. I'm expecting to hear top line results tomorrow, should have a formal presentation for you either the first or second Tuesday of October, depending on how much time there is on the agenda. So either that that first Tuesday or the goal setting meeting to share those. Looking forward to it. Qualitative survey hasn't gone out yet, but we're just about ready to to release it as well. Moving into October, really some pretty, pretty important milestones. Of course, I mentioned the Community Safety Forum on October nineteenth. Courthouse D A O design should formally begin with DLR Group under contract at that point. So that's that's a pretty important milestone. And at that point, we'll be convening the Community Advisory Committee under the direction of Gary Stockoff. So that'll be kicking up, I would expect in in October or maybe early November. In terms of other deliverables, courthouse funding agreement, looking at Vance and just acknowledging that it's gaining traction.
Oh, is it?
Final, well, there's movement anyway.
Good press to know.
It is. It's an important and yes, fingers crossed. I invite Vance to say a couple of words, please.
The we it's it's a little discouraging. I pulled out the last red line version that we had worked on for the courthouse funding agreement and it was May sixth, twenty twenty two. The state has, for whatever reason, not been able to get to it. They have other things, obviously. We finally got to go ahead just last week to communicate attorney to attorney. The real challenge that this courthouse funding agreement faces is the fact that Benton King doesn't own the ground on which the courthouse is going to be placed and the state's template for all their courthouse funding agreements has language based upon the county owning the land. So I sent out an email yesterday to DOJ attorneys pointing out the items in the agreement that I had edited to reflect that it's an eminent domain proceeding and that there's immediate access likelihood, the timing to try to facilitate this conversation between myself and the attorneys such that the template can be amended to the state satisfaction. Recognizing that it's the eminent domain process that's going to confer authority for Benton County to access and develop on that property rather than the stereotypical deed ownership. So that is for whatever reason, it's starting out in fits and starts, I suppose, is the best way to do it. So hopefully yesterday's email will will push this process up to the gears and will be up and running at a much faster pace and not too distant future.
Thank you.
But my fingers are still crossed.
Very good.
Okay.
Nick. First item in October courthouse, D A O, refresh my memory, D A O.
Oh, district attorney's offices.
Thanks.
Welcome. So relative to October and November, we are proposing to hold a couple of groundbreaking events, one for the Crisis Center, another for the Community Safety and Justice Campus. We're really in infancy of that planning process. Timing may very well depend on on attendees' schedules and especially if we are, you know, lucky to have some of our state or federal representatives present. So we're just beginning that that process of reaching out and I'll be having additional discussions with you on that on that topic. So I want to say those dates are very tentative. Right now, we were originally thinking maybe the end of October for the Crisis Center sometime in November for the Community Safety and Justice Campus. It may well prove that we end up doing two events on one day that is again scheduled driven by by other folks. So we're keeping all options on the table until we really nail down availability. There is a potential of an additional forum, forum number three I have listed here. I just have it in November right now. That's really just a placeholder. That could be December, could be January. We're really gonna assess that, I think, later this month and maybe maybe even not seeking determination until October, but we are talking about it with the communications team. So that's definitely on on our radar. And of course, we've always talked about potentially doing an additional survey. I'm waiting to to get the results of number two. It may not be necessary, so not in any hurry to run out and spend an additional chunk of of money if it's if it's not needed. So we'll we'll take that one one step at a time as well. December is things really is where things really start to get exciting for you all and at least on your hard copies, I've highlighted some of the some of the dates. And of course, our objective is in early December, probably that first Tuesday meeting, we really only have two opportunities in December to have discussions, but to begin honing what we'd like in our in our bond measure. Potentially, we make a decision in December. But I did want to point out that there is opportunity for us to push a final decision all the way into January if necessary. And I think you all know me well enough that I'm never trying to defer decisions or actions, but in this case, there's there's still a lot to weigh and we still have goodly bit of community engagement to go through. So I simply wanted to know, you know, how far could we push this and still be prepared to file our or align on our bond measure language and then file on February twenty fourth. So you can kind of see how it stacks up through January into February. A filing date for the title is February twenty fourth. I've confirmed that with our clerk's office. And then at that point, we would go into Safe Harbor. So that's that's where our language needs to be factual and tight at that point. We will be working with the Secretary of State all through, I think, January and February up until that filing date on on our Safe Harbor language. And I'm looking at Vance. Any other thoughts or comments?
No, I guess one of the things that is important is that we'll we'll need to be in communication with Secretary of State's office to find out how long it'll take them to review a bond measure of time ballot title. So that Nick can back that out from the filing deadline. That may, you know, restrict the amount of opportunities you have in January to to consider this, but just know that which is like every other office in the world, they're probably short staffed and probably going to need a little more lead time than they have in the past to review.
Especially with the turnover on the governor's office and all of the changes that'll be occurring, it could be a little bit more.
Yeah, which which is why I think Nick's it's prudent for Nick to put down your consideration of language beginning in December.
It's a big goal. Finally, in terms of DLR Group, our pre designed consultants deliverables. They have two major ones. One I've discussed previously is kind of final costing. We're looking at December for that. I am, I will continue to meet with DLR Group regularly leading up to that time. And, you know, have my pulse on that that costing number, if anything changes that I think is substantive relative to our discussions. But if we get final costing in December, we don't expect those numbers to change substantially before we file for the bond measure in February. I've had this discussion with them already. So we should be safe. As well, they will be providing us with final renderings of the facilities under consideration. So that's courthouse, district attorney's office, sheriff's office and the correctional facility. So these are the nice three dimensional drawings with, you know, multiple views that we can share broadly with the public. You, of course, have seen the the site and draft site master plan, which is sort of is a step from our test fits. The renderings will take it to another level. And that will really be their final delivery in pre. So let me stop there and invite questions.
Comments or questions? Do you want to finish up some notes? No?
Just looking forward, I was glad to get the the site map and in two dimensions and looking forward as soon as they're available, seeing what it looks like in three D and what because there's been some discussion in my community about the correctional facility and what that might look like and I think we would be well served to get our what it actually will look like out to the general public as as soon as we can. We had the discussion recently about the three story courthouse and from Highway twenty, that's going to be the dominating feature, but I don't know quite what that means. going to be the dominating feature, but I don't know quite what that means as far as what it looks like. Whether you're going away from town or into town or but looking forward to that.
And as am I. I do want to set the expectation that the renderings, while, you know, another incremental step in terms of the design detail are still conceptual. Of course, I don't think, you know, we've we've chosen D L R group as our architectural and engineering firm for the courthouse and D A's offices. Likely whatever design the community and the county arrive at will probably drive the whole campus. However, they will not have completed that level of design by the time we get renderings. They probably have some ideas in mind that will be reflected in those renderings, but I I just want to set the expectation that they are nevertheless conceptual. And again, we we involve the public in the design process, so we may land on something slightly different or more different from the renderings.
Thank you.
I think as long as that's clear, that this is the best information we have as of mid-December. This is what we, this is close to what our final product should look like.
I have a question. I remember hearing some reference to the possibility of attaching the sheriff's office to the jail. Has there been any further investigation in that?
Yeah, perhaps. I know that D L R group and the sheriff's office did correspond on that item. And it 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 is part of the site design, so those those buildings will be pushed closer together so that there is a continuity between the two.
Thank you. All right, other comments or questions? All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we will move to item four point four, update on Secure Rural School Act Funds Reauthorization with Rick Cragor, our chief financial officer. And hello, Rick. I see you are joining us online today.
Good morning, Commissioner. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, actually, one moment, please. Can I just ask that everyone who is joining us online, please mute themselves? Go ahead, Rick.
Good morning, Commissioners. Great to see you, joining you today from Ashland. I'm actually here for the treasurer's conference. This is my first one since joining the county, so kind of exciting here today. Obviously, good anticipation for the Fed's move here tomorrow that everybody's anticipating it's having a pretty big impact on the markets today in terms of interest rates. So both opportunities and a little bit of risk. But anyway, I'll tell you more about that at a different time. Here today to follow up on the secure rural schools discussion that we had last week during goal setting and just as a reminder to all of you, we we had discussed the idea, now that we have this opportunity with these dollars, to be able to change the election, which has been in place since two thousand and twelve. We are through this reauthorization, given the opportunity to change elections between the various titles that these dollars go to Title One, Title Two, and Title Three. You might recall our current allocation has been eighty five percent to Title One and fifteen percent to Title Two. The Title Two dollars, as we discussed last week, are dedicated and maintain are maintained at the federal level where they're made available for projects under specific criteria. And again, those aren't dollars that we access, but have opportunity to access as a county or other projects within the county can also access those. Our discussion last week was the idea of maybe moving to Title Three. This was an opportunity to get up to seven percent of money that would come to the county specifically to be used for emergency service type needs. That was the discussion we had last week. I think we all kind of were at that same place. However, after further discussion and further evaluation, and I've talked to each of you individually about this, it appears that there's much more limitation on those Title Three funds. And my fear, and I think all of yours as well, is that we, one, would probably not be able to use those maybe in the intended way we discussed last week. In addition, they would be very, very dedicated to a specific part of the county and maybe not. And in most cases, in in cases where we would not be able to use them in the areas that we need the most. So with that, what I've discussed with you individually, and I think we all collectively agree, is it makes sense to maintain the eighty five and fifteen percent that we have always done. I think the big piece that we need to look at is how do we maybe look at Title Two a little bit more aggressively? And perhaps apply or encourage our partners to apply. I think I mentioned last week, the sheriff's office from two thousand sixteen here in Benton County did take advantage of those dollars, but that's the last time that we've seen a specific project for the county. Again, it doesn't have to be the county. It could be, of course, any any organization. But again, I think there are opportunities that we may be leaving on the table to access those dollars. So with that, Commissioners, my recommendation would be for us to stay at eighty five and fifteen. This will not require you to do any declaration because that's already been done and would still be maintained. So that's my recommendation today. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rick. Comments or questions?
I guess my only comment is maybe Benton County being more active in the Title Two arena and that has the advantage of we're not changing any any election and and trying to just be more active and looking for opportunities.
And I just want to go back to the fact that I was very excited initially about Title Three because I thought we would be able to use those funds for our community wildfire protection plan and for implementation of that plan. And it's a yes, but in terms of the geography where we could use those funds. And I I think that we would find it difficult to meet the requirements of Title Three in terms of using those funds on our adjacent to B O M O N C lands and the Forest Service lands. And it would be tough money to use. So I'm, I think that this is the right decision.
Yes, and I agree with that, similar to what the other Commissioners have stated. At the last meeting, it seemed like, oh, yeah, this is a great idea. And then afterwards, looking into the links that you followed up with and seeing, you know, that there it's much more, I want to say limited, but more more specific criteria, you know, oh, it sounds great. We could get more money for search and rescue. But with the caveat that it's only for the Saislaw, you know. So I think this is a good direction that we are moving in now. Other comments or questions? And Rick, do you need anything else from us?
I do not, Commissioner. Again, appreciation for the discussion last week. You know, again, I I agree with everything you've all said. Sounded like is exciting opportunity, but I also want to agree with Commissioner Malone. I think we also still have opportunities with Title Two that we can pursue and I look forward to working with other departments and seeing how we can do that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rick. We appreciate it. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, I will call for a five minute break. Let's run up to six. We'll be back at ten A M. We are all back, so we are ready to resume our meeting. That will move us into the business meeting. First up is the consent calendar. So I hear a motion or changes to the minutes. Second, all those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Next up, proclamations. We have in the matter of proclaiming September fifteenth to October fifteenth, Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County. And with us, we have Rosio Munoz from the Health Equity and Communications interim manager. Welcome.
Hello. And I have with us our coworker Javier Navarro. And we're here to represent the, excuse me, to present the proclamation. So in the matter of proclaiming September fifteenth to October fifteenth, the Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County, proclamation two zero two two hyphen zero one eight. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we pause to celebrate the immeasurable contributions these individuals have made to our nation. The history of Hispanic people in the U S predates the founding of our nation with roots in the land as indigenous people who have shaped the fabric of this country. Hispanics have overcome great obstacles to persevere and flourish in every sector of our society. With a national theme Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, Benton County's observance celebrates the histories, cultures, and all contributions made by Hispanic Americans who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and all they will continue to make in the future. This month, we honor Hispanic American communities even as we recognize and rededicate ourselves to addressing the challenges to equality and opportunity that many Hispanics still face. Benton County stands in solidarity with the majority of the nations, calling for immediate end to separation families at the border, closing of child detention camps, establishments of compassionate processes for refugee asylum requests, and ensure that all voices are represented and welcome to help build stronger communities and stronger nation. We value respecting human rights with equality and dignity as a fundamental humanist value. And reflecting our nation's rich Hispanic heritage, let us take pride in our unique and vibrant history and recommit to a shared future of freedom, prosperity, and opportunities for all. Therefore, be it here I proclaimed that September fifteenth to October fifteenth, two thousand two, is Hispanic Heritage Month. And I would, we would like to read this also in Spanish, if that's okay with you all.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. En lo referente de la proclamación quince de septiembre al quince de octubre, mes herencia hispana en el fundado de Benton. Durante el mes nacional de la herencia hispana, los atenemos a celebrar las grandes contribuciones que estas personas han hecho en nuestra nación. La historia de la población hispana en los Estados Unidos antes cede a la fundación de nuestra nación. Con sus orígenes en esta tierra como indígenas que han formado la estructura de este país. Los hispanos han superado grandes obstáculos para preservar y crecer en todos los sectores de nuestra sociedad. Con el tema nacional Unidos, inclusión para nuestra, para una Con el tema nacional Unidos, inclusión para nuestra, para una nación más fuerte, la conmemoración del Condado Benton celebra las historias, las culturas, y todas las contribuciones de los hispanoamericanos que pueden rostrear sus orígenes hasta España, México, el Caribe, América Central, y América del Sur, y todo lo que continuarán haciendo en el futuro. Este mes, le hacemos homenaje a las comunidades hispanoamericanas aún cuando reconocemos y nos dedicamos nuevamente a resolver las dificultades de equidad y oportunidad que muchos hispanos continúan afrontando. El Condado Benton se presenta en solidaridad con la mayor parte de la nación que pide que acabe de inmediato la separación de las familias en la frontera, el cierre de los campamentos de detenciones de menores, establecer un proceso compasivo para las solicitudes de refugio y asilo, y garantizarle que todas las voces estén representadas y sean aceptadas para ayudar a construir comunidades más sólidas y una nación más fuerte. Valoramos el respeto de los derechos humanos con la equidad y la dignidad como valores humanistas fundamentales. Al reflexionar sobre la rica herencia hispana de nuestra nación, sintámonos orgullosos de nuestra historia única y vibrante, y vamos a comprometernos a compartir un futuro de libertad, prosperidad, oportunidad para todos. Por lo tanto, por la presente, se proclama que el quince de septiembre al quince de octubre en dos mil dos veintidós es el mes de la herencia hispana. Gracias.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County, proclamation twenty twenty-two dash zero one nine.
One eight.
Let's say one nine in Spanish.
Oh, so do they, yes, I do see that. So in English, it says eighteen. In Spanish, it says dash zero one nine. Well, okay, do you know which one is correct?
Let's assume it's zero one eight, but we can correct it after the fact if we need to. Perfect.
Okay, um, second bit.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
All right, so since it is not eleven a.m. yet, we will skip the public hearing and come back to it when eleven a.m. rolls around. With that, we will move to new business, eight point one, Discussion and Action Regarding Exotic Animal Ordinants Working Group. We have Lynn McKee with us, our Natural Areas Parks and Events Director. Welcome, Lynn.
Good morning, commissioners. Unfortunately, Trudy Orland, the Reverend Chair, could not join us today due to work conflict, but she seems very generous. I just wanted to come back around. We have talked about, yeah, we have talked about the exotic animal ordinance in the past. Just for a little context, the exotic animal ordinance was passed in two thousand eighteen, and then in the two thousand nineteen Benton County Fair and Rodeo, we had the issue where we had booked the stingray touch tanks. And we found out the day before fair that they were actually on our exotic animal ordinance list, banned list. And it took a little of a biology class for us to figure that out because there are subspecies of the lemon shark that we did not know. And so I had staff go back and look and, and look at the broad categories on the exotic animal ordinance, and they came back and said it covers about two thousand species, which included horses, since we had not meant to ban horses. So that was updated by the commissioners. And so at that point, we had decided that maybe we needed to step back and look at the exotical animal ordinance since we had already kind of come to cross with it a couple of times ourselves. And so you had advised us to create a working group, which we did. And we met multiple times and to come up with a recommendation as to what we might see happening with the exotic animal ordinance. And, and it was a really great group. One of the things that they voted on first that they recommended, and this was across the board, no one had any dissension on this, is to not have a list of banned animals. And one of the, one of the points of that is that the state already has a list of banned animals through Fish and Wildlife. But also, and I thought this was kind of an interesting viewpoint, they had said, well, then, if you're worried about their welfare while they're being traveled for traveling shows, what about the animals that aren't on the list? Do you not care about them? And so I thought that was really an interesting perspective that, okay, you're only worried about this list, right? Even though it's a couple thousand species. So we stepped back and said, okay, so we're really looking at more of the welfare of animals being exhibited in traveling shows. And so we, we had wanted to reference a number of already existing welfare ordinances and such. We had Jacob Cammons on our working group, who is a deputy district attorney here in the Benton County. I don't know if you are aware, he is the animal cruelty prosecutor for the state. So he was a great, a great source for us for information. So we referenced a number of animal welfare acts and statutes that we thought they already exist. He said, why are we at the, and feel, let's just make sure that we are enacting and enforcing those. One of the requests from Erica O'Neil, our animal control officer, she wanted to see kind of a special use permit process established so that if you did have a traveling show coming through, she would like to see, like, we already have a special use permit process in place through NAP, that through natural areas, parks, and events, that they would come in and fill out a form that shows what animals would be coming through, where they would be showing, how they would be housed, the vet's contact information, and all this specific information so that if she wants to do any sort of inspection or anything, she'll know right where to go, when to go, and who's doing it, instead of it just coming in and out. And then there would be a fee associated with that to help support that, that staffing. We don't anticipate that there would be that very many, a couple of years. We don't anticipate a large number. But that way, we would know exactly what, who is coming in. And we had, they had put an exclusion recommendation on there that we don't want to get a special use permit for every dog and cat show. So there would be a special use permit on certain common domestic and four H animals, and but we would want to know other animals coming through. So, so that was effectively the recommendation of the working group was to, was to kind of step back and look more at the welfare of the animals and, and monitoring the, the traveling through. And so the question comes to the commissioners is, where would you like to go from here? Would you like to leave the, the ordinance as it is? Or would you like me to go back and, and draft an actual ordinance with this sort of recommendation incorporated into that and bring it back to you for your review and discussion? So the question is, how would you like me to move forward from this point?
Good question. I mean, I support what you are, what the work group has come out, up with, what you've explained and what's in the packet. Other comments?
I was very heavily engaged in the first round of all of this discussion, and I do agree that it was the treatment of the animals in question that was the biggest issue at hand.
Really?
And I think that this is a fair approach, and we did take, we did look at this type of approach when we considered the ordinance initially and chose at that time not to create a new fee-based program. But given the challenges of having any kind of a list and how, how inclusive is it? Is it too inclusive? I think this is the right approach, and it also gives us the opportunity to double check, as you say, the welfare of the animals that are being exhibited. And so if we have the capacity to do this, and I think we know better now, what, how many events per year this will?
Yeah, it's only a couple. Yeah, it would really be impacted.
I'm, I'm supportive of this direction. Okay.
Uh, I, I'm in agreement with that, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the work group. You didn't mention what a, a broad group of stakeholders it, it was, that was assembled, carefully assembled. And, and so I, I feel good about the process and the product that's come out of that. So it's, it's taken a little while here, but appreciate the effort to get to this point.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the members of the working group are included in your packet, but we did have a nice range. We did Heartland Humane Society, we had Intimity Wildlife represented it. And we want to make sure we had a number of groups that would represent that welfare of the animals. They were included. But having Jacob Cammons join us, that was, I think, a really good coup, that he is so knowledgeable, invested in that area. And he was supportive of the direction we were going as well.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion.
Yeah, I just want to add something that I don't think has come out here very clearly, and I'm supportive of the group's work. But this particular ordinance that we have in our book is an incredibly difficult ordinance, both for staff and the public. And I, and I, and I have felt from the beginning that we do this, the public a disservice by putting an ordinance out there that they can't understand. And it's doubly difficult when they ask us what's banned, unless you're a biology major. We, we didn't know. So anything we can do to simplify it so that somebody going to our website, reading this ordinance, will know what Benton County is doing and how to place it. That is, is a tremendous step forward. So.
Thank you. With that, do I hear a motion?
Uh, question, do we need to repeal existing ordinance?
Not, not right now. If, if the direction is to direct staff to come back with new ordinance, part of that process to adopt a new ordinance would be to repeal the elements because it's within a larger ordinance. So.
Yes, it would just be a certain section.
A section of it and replacing with new.
Okay.
So, so thank you.
Not yet. Okay. I was, I was so excited.
Yeah, I was just looking for direction if that's the way you'd like to go.
I would be happy to move to direct staff to draft an updated ordinance based on the recommendations of the exotic animal ordinance working group and bring it back to the Board of Commissioners for review and discussion.
Um, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
I'll get to work. Advance. I'll be in touch.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you, Lynn. And thank you, Bailey. All right, moving on. Departmental reports and requests. We have item nine point one, Oregon House Bill forty-one twenty-three, Coordinated Homeless Response Memorandum of Understanding. Rebecca Taylor, the Home Op, Home Opportunity Planning and Equity Project Manager.
Commissioner Wise, can I jump in? This is Julie Arena remotely. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hello. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Rebecca has been slightly delayed. She should be there in two minutes with a personal thing that popped up. But Brigida Olson is here to provide an update from the city's perspective. Thank you, Brigida.
Morning, Brigida Olson, City of Corvallis Housing Division. The council last night approved the MOU as written, proposed. There weren't any questions associated with the, the MOU besides whether a councilor and a staff person had voting rights, and that's explicit in the MOU as written. This, as a reminder, we talked about in September eighth, the work session between county and city staff associated with bringing up a coordinated response system for office. Both county staff and city staff will be actively participating. City of Corvallis is expected to not be the only city within the coordinated office. I know that the team is working on reaching out to our peers across Benton County to actively participate in this new office. And this will allow us to really take a systems approach to houselessness. So right now, we have a somewhat fragmented system, but this will allow us to help streamline, bring in national best practices, including coordinated entry, data associated with sheltering, how many shelter beds we need, being able to identify what kind of upstream solutions we need for permanent supportive housing, et cetera. We are working closely also with our peers, who are the service providers, who are doing really the hard work in our communities, helping people navigate getting into shelter, then ideally, of course, into affordable housing and permanent supportive housing, market rate housing, et cetera. Julie, do you have anything to add?
Just one update about the outreach to our smaller city partners in Benton County. We have met with Chris Workman in Philomath and also Steve Martinenko in Monroe, and we are scheduling the meeting with Pat Hare and Adair, wanting to make sure that all of the smaller cities in Benton County know what's happening, that this pilot is starting now, that we are collaborating with the City of Corvallis and CSC, and really to hear their feedback on what level of engagement they would like. And so far, the reception from Philomath and Monroe has been very positive. They would like to be more engaged on this topic. They are coming back to their city councils to talk about us coming to a city council meeting in the near future to give an update on this same topic. And overall, the reception has been really positive, that they are glad we are moving forward with greater communication and coordination on this topic, and they look forward to being more engaged than we have in the past. So more to follow as we continue that communication with our smaller cities, but the initial reaction was positive, so I'm happy to share that. And Rebecca, I'll hand it over to you.
I would just add one more thing. The, the MOU does, of course, include CSC, so Community Services Consortium, which is our anti-poverty program or CAP agency within the three-county area of Benton. And, and of course, they're a key player in helping identify additional resources, helping streamline services within our service provider network, and then working on upstream solutions collaboratively.
Hello. Good morning. I apologize for being late. Where are we at? It sounds like we have an update about our rural outreach so far with the project.
And the city meeting last night.
Excellent. So, yeah, where we're at with our memorandum of understanding, I think that's probably you covered in your review, is currently between the City of Corvallis and Benton County and Community Service Consortium, with the intention of broadening outreach to involve our rural communities to understand where the partnerships might be in there. Specifically, Benton County is identified as the fiscal agent within the memorandum of understanding as being the steward and the recipient of the grant funding. In addition to that, is essentially kind of leading the conversation, moving forward, convening the parties, and basically being sort of the, I guess, the consolidator and the coordinator of the work moving forward and close collaboration with the City of Corvallis, and then understanding how those roles might expand as we move into maybe adding different partnerships moving forward. In addition, we will be identifying members for our advisory board as identified in the memorandum of understanding, what that looks like and how that works in partnership with the HOPE advisory board as well as far as informing the work moving forward. We actually have a meeting tomorrow to talk about the strategic planning process, and then also maybe some of the other things identified in the memorandum of understanding to make sure that we're moving along all the different aspects of accomplishing the House Bill four, one, two, three together, because there are quite a few things that need to happen in, in concert to be able to meet some of the deadlines. Definitely, we are not looking at this as a, as simply a box checking opportunity, but really understand how this is going to support the work that we've already done in our community, but also expand upon that, like Julie mentioned with rural outreach, but also strengthen the coordination that is already occurring with our service providers. So there's a lot of opportunity in this project, and I'm happy to hear that it was well received at the city. It's pretty much template language that was, you know, taken from the House Bill itself with a little bit of our own little style added to it. So I am available, I guess, as a group to answer any questions you might have about the memorandum of understanding.
Sure. Commissioner Ojo.
Yeah, I have just one question, and, and you kind of touched on it. And that is what the role of the coordinated office advisory board will be with respect to HOPE and with the HOPE Executive Committee, because in some ways, it feels like it overlaps with that, that body, but I'm not completely sure how they'll work together. Or is, is that advisory body more like the, 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 the level of Suzanne Hoffman and Paul Bolotik coordinating, and, and which is also happening right now. So I'm a little unclear about where that advisory body sits. And I'm assuming, second part of the question, that if Philomath were to join or Monroe, that they would also have two members that would serve on that advisory body.
All right. So the, I'll, the first question being, what is the distinction between the advisory board as identified in the House Bill four, one, two, three language, and then also our existing HOPE advisory board? So as it is defined in the House Bill itself, it, it needs to be represented by elected officials of each of the governing members, which our HOPE advisory board does have that. This is specifically for decision-making aspects of the office, whatever that office ultimately looks like in our community, to have, you know, specifically, we're thinking, you know, if we're going to take on certain projects or certain budget decisions or very specific structure of, you know, what exactly this will come to be. That advisory board as identified in House Bill four, one, two, three, with those two members or representatives from each of the member governments would serve that purpose. The HOPE advisory board, we identified in the section as it's called out in the memorandum of understanding as well, is section one and five, and that it's really that coordination of the stakeholders in our community. is section one um, and five, and that it's really that coordination of the stakeholders in our community around the homeless response system. So it's really identifying where um, rather than necessarily just saying, yes, we will do these things, we'll reach out to these different um, service providers and representatives and stakeholders in our community, um, identifying the whole uh, board as the infrastructure to make sure that that is formally acknowledged how we will do that. And I will um, ask Julie too, if she would like to uh, follow up with that.
I think the best answer, Commissioner Ojero, is that um, we don't have a definitive decision yet um, and that we're still working through what that advisory body to the coordinated homeless response would be. Um, but that the HOPE board already plays such a key role with public engagement, um, and that that is a part of this legislation. Um, and so there is an intention to make sure we meet um, what's outlined in the legislation and also utilize the existing infrastructure of the HOPE board and HOPE executive committee, but I don't think there's a definitive answer yet, and we're still working through that.
Okay, then you're, you, sorry, you had a, the third, third question or a second question was what, what would happen if engagement with our rural communities added uh, another government, uh, city government to that? And yes, we would find that same representation. Um, just like Julie says, we don't necessarily know how that's all going to play out. It could be that that representation is short of maybe a formal memorandum of understanding, but somehow or another acknowledging their participation, um, moving forward will be something we'll be identifying how best to engage in those decision-making aspects of the office.
I, I can see looking at this um, language from House Bill four, one, two, three, that it was influenced by the Multnomah structure. And when, when we first put together the HOPE advisory board, we started with their structure and we uh, changed it to fit ourselves here. But now we're coming back around to a little bit more of their approach. So it's, it's an interesting uh, dance as we move forward. But I think it, um, I'm very excited about it.
Any comments or questions?
Uh, I think you answered uh, with the additional communities, Philomath, Monroe, Adair. Would they have a separate MOU or, or would, would it be a addition to the one we're looking at uh, this morning?
So I think in keeping in um, the same theme as Julie mentioned, is we're not entirely sure what all this will look like moving forward. However, what we presented during the joint meeting was um, the memorandum of understanding that might come out of various different partnerships might look different based on the part of what the participation level is. Uh, right now, the City of Corvallis Community Service Consortium, there's a clear understanding of what those roles look like. Um, and so we've also drafted the MOU currently that would enable um, people to join as is, we, we dropped in a way that is not specific to City of Corvallis and the, and CSC in the body of the MOU. However, it might be that as we move forward, there might be more clarification to the roles and the responsibilities of each member government. And in that case, it would be a new memorandum of understanding with new language.
Great, great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
We're ready for a motion.
Would, are you ready for us to make a motion?
Yes.
All right.
Uh, I move to approve the City of Corvallis, uh, Benton County and Community Services Consortium memorandum of understanding House Bill forty-one twenty-three, uh, coordinate homeless response office.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I believe we have run out of agenda items until our public hearing. So we will recess until eleven AM.
We, we can't.
We will see you all back here at eleven AM.
Recording stopped.
All right. Recording in progress. It is eleven AM and we are back together and we will move into the public hearing. Um, let me find my script that our county council has so graciously made for me. All right. Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two at eleven AM is the time set for the request for exemption from competitive bidding for the construction management slash general contracting services for the courthouse slash district attorney's office component of the Benton County Justice System Improvement Plan. The hearing procedure will be as follows. One, staff will present the staff report. Two, any member of the public may testify. And three, staff responds if necessary. Following the testimony, the record will be closed and the board will deliberate and make a decision. Um, and I think we can go ahead and jump into the staff report. I see we have with us Gary Stockoff.
Thank you, Commissioner Wise. Hopefully this will be fairly straightforward. Couple of weeks ago, we came to you and presented the information on this exception to the bidding procedures in accordance with the state that we were requesting a construction manager general contractor approach CMGC. And to do that, we do need to find adult findings of fact and also approve or approve a res or order to acknowledge that. Initially, we wanted to do this for the whole JSEP program, but it was felt that we would right now be best served by only having it be for the court and the DA. So that is what is before you today is the exception to use CMGC for the courthouse and the DA. And you know, we will be back later when the bond passes to do the other ones. And if there's any questions, I can answer those now.
All right. Any clarifying questions for Gary? Hearing none. And then I believe I was supposed to ask the commissioners if anyone needs to declare any bias or conflict of interest or ex parte contact. No, I have none as well. All right, with that, we will move on to the public testimony. Is there anyone who would like to testify at the public hearing today? I will ask for those in the room first and then online. You can have up to three minutes. Is there anyone in the boardroom who would like to testify? Hearing and seeing none since I can't see the boardroom. Uh, is there anyone online who would like to testify? Hearing and seeing none. We will move on. I will close the public test or the public hearing and we can move into deliberations. Deliberations, comments, questions from my fellow commissioners.
I do not have any questions.
Just to say that the CMGC approach seems to have worked really well for this facility that we're sitting in. And I think that it's the right approach to take.
Yes, I agree. And there were several reasons outlined in the packet that outline all of the advantages to going this route. Um, and do I hear a motion?
I would move to approve the order and attached exhibit A requesting an exemption from competitive bidding for the construction management general contracting services for the courthouse district attorney's office component of the Benton County Justice System Improvement Plan.
Oh, I'll second that and that is ordered D twenty twenty-two days zero seven zero.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, motion carries. And that handles that, I believe. Thank you, Gary. All right, and that is everything on our agenda. So I anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting at eleven oh four AM. Thank you.